So just before we start, just to kind of cover the format of tonight. So the Village Board will start the meeting. We're going to have a public hearing shortly for Village Business. Then we will go into recess, turn the meeting over to the Comprehensive Committee for their public hearing. There'll be a presentation by Bonnie Franson, the planner. And in front of us is the five members of the Comprehensive Plan. And that will, you know, be the public hearing portion. And once the public hearing is closed, they will exit stage left to the conference room in the rear to discuss whatever is brought up at the public hearing. And then the Village Board will come out of recess and continue with their with their meeting. And then upon the Comprehensive Plan Committee coming out of their meeting, which is still public, they would be able then to present to the Village Board their findings and potential recommendations, comments. Okay? So if we could please stand for the pledge and then hold on to silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please will stand, please, for silence for President Carter and the New Orleans victims and tragedy that happened last week. Thank you very much. The starter for our public hearing is Local Law Number One of year 2025 authorizing property tax levy in excess of limits established in General Municipal Law Section 3C. So with local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in General Municipal Law 3C, being enacted by the Board of Trustees Village of Washington Ville, Orange County, New York, as follows. Section one legislative intent is in the intent of this local law to override the limit on the amount of real property taxes that may be levied by the Village of Washington Ville and to allow the village to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing March first, 2025, that requires real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined by General Municipal Law 3C. So we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
Got a motion of second?
Is that Steve?
Steve.
Yeah, it was Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
It's now open to the public if anyone has any particular comments. This is something that started, I want to say, a bunch of years ago when New York State kind of mandated that there wouldn't be any tax increases a certain percentage, which I believe is two percent. I'm not sure if it has changed. But at the end of the day, they also, the state allows us to go through this process. So we, if our tax rate is in excess of two percent, this protects the village from any type of reprimand from the state of us not doing this portion of it, and therefore taxes were above the two percent threshold. I think every, pretty much every municipality does this as just a normal practice to, again, protect themselves from from anything coming down regarding financial and state law. So again, if there's any comments, this is just a normal annual thing that we've been doing.
Sean, Sean, I agree with you for the board. At this time, is there any reason or do you anticipate raising it more than a two percent?
Yes, it will be more than two percent.
All right. I agree with you.
Yes. Thank you. And just to mention on the back of that, which I think we already have in announcements and discussion, but our public hearing will be the thirteenth, seven o'clock regarding the budget, and it will be available online. Or if someone wants to come in for a hard copy, just give us a couple of minutes of credit, but the budget will be online Wednesday of this week for review. Yes, sir.
I'd like to come in for a hard copy.
Okay.
Wednesday.
No worries.
Thank you.
We'll print it out Wednesday. With that, is there any public comment? If not, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, with that, could I have a motion to? I want to see a term.
Go into recess.
Go into recess. Have a motion, have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
I would note for the record, it's to go in so that the Comprehensive Plan Committee can present.
Okay, thank you. For the record, it'll be for the Comprehensive Plan to give their, perform their public hearing. With that, we turn it over to the Complan, Bonnie Franson, for the beginning of her presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Mr. Attorney, should I, should the committee open the public hearing and then do the presentation or do the presentation?
Yes, open, open the public hearing, then do the presentation.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to ask the Washington Ville Comprehensive Plan Committee that's in front of us, if someone would please make a motion to open the public hearing and someone seconded it?
Take a motion to open the public hearing.
You have a first and a second? Those who vote in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, so we will be opening this public hearing. Everyone, my name is Bonnie Franson. We are the planners retained by the Village of Washington Ville to oversee this process in coordination with the Village Board and with the Comprehensive Plan Committee. You'll note that the slide as part of the presentation says 2024 Comprehensive Plan Draft. Obviously, we're in 2025, so that'll be one of our updates when we get the document to the Village Board. My name is Bonnie Franson. I have another associate, Danielle Dreyer, who will be taking notes on this. So our Comprehensive Plan Committee, you'll see some of the representatives here who were able to attend. They've been very diligent in overseeing this process, and it cannot have been done without them. We were also supported by the Village of Washington Ville staff, the Board of Trustees, and then we were involved in coordinating and putting it all together. And then lastly, and importantly, this was a public process by virtue of the fact that there is a committee putting this together, interjected public participation as well as public participation events. So we're here, and this Comprehensive Plan Committee, sorry, this Comprehensive Plan is for the Village of Washington Ville. There are some people who have Washington Ville addresses. They may think they're in the Village of Washington Ville, but they just may be in the unincorporated area of the town of Blooming Grove. So this process, this document, and ultimately the zoning that comes from it, is for the incorporated Village of Washington Ville. So this is a summary, ten steps in terms of the process that was undergone. The first part of the process was to establish the Comprehensive Plan Committee. There was a community survey that was administered, many of you may have taken it, to get input from the public. A key part of this was to analyze existing conditions. Where is the village now? And I'll get a little more into that. Public participation was part of this process. Ultimately, the committee identified goals, objectives, and recommendations. The draft plan was prepared, and we're at the point where it was presented to the public, and it's up to this committee to determine whether they're ready to forward it to the Village Board. So if you have not, for any reason, seen the document, it is online. That's what, I did a little excerpt from the webpage. You can review it on the website, so please do. And this is the first step in the process. The Comprehensive Plan Committee will decide whether to recommend it to the Village Board. The Village Board is actually responsible for adopting the document. So there will be another public hearing, so if you haven't had an opportunity to review the document, you can, and if you have comments on it, you should be submitting it to the Village Board. So for those of you who are not familiar with Comprehensive Plans, what are they? They are established under New York State Village Law, and the law describes it as a document that guides immediate and long-range growth, protection, enhancement, and development in the village. So Comprehensive Plans are about where do you want to grow, where do you not want to grow, and what's the pattern that you want to follow in terms of development? It assesses the issues and opportunities confronting the Village of Washington Ville, and then it sets the vision, the goals, and the policies for this preservation and growth for the next 10 to 20 years. So why is this document important? All village land use regulations in New York State have to be in accordance with a Comprehensive Plan if one has been prepared. So once it's prepared, that document has to be followed, and the zoning, the land use regulations, have to be consistent with it. It's also a document that is proactive versus reactive. Instead of reacting to development that may come into the community, it's intended to promote community consensus and to provide coordination in advance in terms of how the village wants to evolve, how it sees itself evolving. Very importantly, Comprehensive Plan documents are important because they're used to attract investment and support future funding opportunities. New York Forward is one of the state programs, DRI Downtown Revitalization Initiative. These are programs where the state has awarded funding in millions of dollars toward communities, and they do so when there's a plan in place in terms of how the community wants to evolve. So it's a document beyond just the land use regulations and being a vision. It's actually used for funding purposes. So the Comprehensive Plan inputs in the preparation of this, again, with the Plan Committee, the staff in the town, sorry, the Village Board, in-person workshops, public online surveys, existing conditions inventory, and public participation. And the basic questions that the plan seeks to address is where are we now? So those are the existing conditions in the community, its demographics, et cetera. Where are we going? What is the current trend? Where do we want to be? What's, again, the vision for the community? How do you see yourself evolving? And then a blueprint, how do we get there, a framework for getting there? So in terms of existing conditions, we looked at demographics. We looked at land use and zoning, environmental resources, community facilities and services, historic resources, utilities, transportation, among the various topics. So we prepared a report, presentations, presented it to the committee, and asked them, what did they think about these conditions? Just in general, who are we planning for? The village is about 5,657 persons in 2020, as per the census. The village is about 2.54 square miles. That's the area that we're planning for. And in general, much of the village is developed. There's only about 200 or so vacant and agricultural uses out of about 1,554 acres that are available. That doesn't mean there isn't opportunities for infill development, for redevelopment, but when we think of development that is on new land, on vacant land, not utilized greenfields, there isn't a lot left, which is something the committee had to address. About 88.4% of all the parcels in the village are residential. So the vast majority of the land area in the community is residential. About 54.6% of all the dwelling units are single-family detached dwellings, which actually is not significantly high. You have a large number of attached units, multifamily units, and mobile homes, manufactured homes in this community. So you have a very diverse range of housing, which provides for household diversity within the community. So these were the kind of conditions we looked at. We looked at environment, where were the floodplains? We considered various other documents, including the documents that were prepared after the flooding that occurred within the village. So there've been a lot of inputs for the committee to understand the community and who and what they are planning for. So in terms of where are we going, again, there was a lot of public participation. There was a mini survey. There are documents that are appendices to the plan that summarize workshops, the surveys, et cetera, to talk about where did people want to go, what did they see were the issues, what did the vision were the opportunities? We held a public participation event that was held back in February of 2024, and there were eight workstations for those who attended on existing conditions, vision, strengths and opportunities, weaknesses and threats, the residential and commercial visual preferences, recreation, and the southern gateway. So those were all topics. Everybody was invited to it. There was a lot of public dissemination of information to get people to come here and to be able to participate. So one of the ideas and one of the things that we do as part of these workstations is oftentimes, when it comes to, when we're talking specifically about development, is people don't necessarily have the words or they're not able to communicate what they want. So someone says, they won't say, I want four to six dwelling units per acre, or I want 10 to 12. Rather, we show them pictures of what development looks like, and then the committee and the community get to pick and choose what they think is appropriate for the village. So part of this workshop process was to show visual preferences and to get a sense of what people liked, and then to communicate, whether maybe they didn't like this or they liked it but, subject to some changes. So the prior image showed residential, they like large lot, but they also like small lot housing. Here, what did people want? They wanted restaurants with outdoor seating. They want mixed two and three-story commercial, more traditional type of commercial development with residential above, with buildings that are oriented to the street and where there's public parking available. And a lot of that is what you have now. And I think that's one of the big takeaways, is the village loves the village, and they like what it is, and they want a continuation of that pattern. There's no big breakout in terms of what people want in the community. So if you go to look at the draft Comprehensive Plan, that's the how do we get there? This is listing all the goals, the objectives, the land pattern, et cetera, that the village wants to pursue to achieve its, ultimately, its vision for the future. So these are the sections of the document that deal with the, it's an introduction to the process, vision for the future, the land pattern that's conceptual, upon which the zoning will be based, the overarching goals and objectives. There's a section on downtown Washington Ville because it's a very important aspect of the community. There are recommended design guidelines that will be followed by the ZBA Planning Board, and then implementation measures, what needs to be done, and whether it's short-term, long-term, or ongoing to achieve those objectives. And then ultimately, appendices that have the public participation results and various maps. So this is the general framework for the Comprehensive Plan. There's the overarching vision statement, and then the vision statement is supported by goals, and those goals are achievable through specific objectives and recommendations. And that all ties into a land pattern that is, the image of that is, and a map of that is provided in the plan. And the land patterns is what the zoning deals with. So part of this process, once the Comprehensive Plan Committee has completed their work, it gets forwarded to the Village Board, then the land use regulations need to be consistent with that Comprehensive Plan document as may be amended by the Village Board. So this is the vision statement, the draft that the committee came up with, with public input. Village of Washington Ville is a quaint, picturesque, welcoming, and supportive community. Its unique character and history are evident throughout the village. Village of Washington Ville will continue to preserve its quality of life, protect its natural resources, and protect and support the economic interests of the community by supporting local businesses and encouraging responsible development. In the next 10 years and beyond, the village will protect and enhance its natural environs, including floodplains, wetlands, surface waters, its native landscape and scenic views, maintain its historic beauty and character through appropriate future reuse and compatible development, protect the aesthetic character and quality of life within the downtown and residential neighborhoods, encourage economic development, which fits within the village's existing building pattern and scale of development, encourage collaboration between the residents, business owners, and organizations within the community, and then emphasize transparency and accountability for all. So there are seven goal categories, and these are the main topics in the Comprehensive Plan. They address land use and zoning, housing, environmental resources, transportation, community services and facilities, historic and scenic resources, and then downtown Washington Ville. And so these are a summary of the goals for each of those topic areas, whether it's promote a diverse land use pattern, continue to provide a diversity of housing options, protect the interconnected rich natural ecosystem that already exists, promote multimodal transportation that both prioritizes an interconnected system of sidewalks that promote safe pedestrian environs, but also really try and address traffic mobility, especially through the center of the village. Ensure that the community and services and facilities that serve the residents and businesses are storm-hardened. Obviously, the village lost a village hall in our great flood, and we want to ensure that those kinds of outcomes do not happen again. Protect the historic and scenic resources within the village. You have a wealth of historic and scenic attributes that the committee wants to protect. And then specifically preserve those resources that are embodied in the buildings within the downtown. You have a actual downtown area, it's a crossroads downtown, and the desire is to expand that and emulate it, and we'll show you an image of what that means. So we're not going to go through all of the objectives this evening. They are available online if you want to look at them. But to give you an example, when we say promote a diverse land use pattern, some of the, some of the objectives are simplify the number of residential zones, create a mid-downtown zone, and rezonaries to allow downtown expansion, create overlay districts. Overlay districts are districts that are in addition to base zoning districts. The base zoning districts, districts specify the uses that are allowed within a particular zoning. But overlay districts have additional protection measures, and they include things like, let's say, floodplain overlays. There may be specific regulations to areas within the floodplain where it says, yes, you're allowed to develop, but it has to be done in these terms to be able to protect life and property. Address creation of the Joint Planning Board ZBA, support business formation. So again, when you visit the village website, you will see all those objectives. So land patterns and conceptual land use. This is the conceptual land use map, and it is subject to change. And as I mentioned earlier, much of the village is already built. And you'll see that larger lots to the north of the rail trail. So the green area, kind of the line that goes through maybe the bottom one-third of the village, that's the rail trail. And inasmuch as you see a lotting pattern that has very large lots, those are actually the school district properties. So while it may appear there's some big properties, as if they're developable, they're not. And so really, a lot of what is available are miscellaneous parcels, and you do have larger properties as you enter the village on 208, what we call the southern gateway. So the conceptual land use plan establishes this general pattern for development, and it builds upon the existing pattern, except in some key areas. So there is a proposal, and this has gone into more depth in the, in the document. But for instance, if you see the red area, that's the downtown, and you'll see that there's a portion of it that extends to the south of the trail. So there is a concept to allow some downtown expansion to the south of the trail. The arrows that you see here are areas where there's significant vistas. So as you're driving around the community, you know that suddenly you see these beautiful, spectacular views of Scunnamore Mountain, and it's part of the framework, part of what makes Washington Ville, Washington Ville. And those arrows are showing where there's significant views because that comes into play ultimately in the Comprehensive Plan recommendations and then in land use regulations. We have much of the villages either low density, medium density, or high density. Those are your larger lots, single-family dwellings, medium size, and then your higher-density residential are all your multifamily areas that are kind of clustered in toward the downtown area by, you know, brotherhood in those areas. We do envision a limited use corridor, and those areas are where there are existing dwellings that are on 94 or that are on 208. And there is some allowance to allow them to go to non-residential uses, just like they are today. When you see the houses that have been converted to offices with their attractive signage, you know, as you're going toward New Windsor out, toward the east of the village, that pattern is allowed, but there is no strip commercial. The Complan does not envision allowing this whole length of 94 to 208 to be entirely commercial. And one of the reasons they do that is because you don't want to take away from the downtown. If you allow it to happen along the various quarters, you're taking away that core where all the people will converge. It's just going to scatter things, and it won't create that core where people want to go to the downtown. There is a desire to encourage more business formation as well as to encourage entertainment-type uses, whether it's restaurants or other types of activities within the downtown, to bring them there. You'll see this green network, and that's certainly not the entirety of the green network, but one of the really, I think, unique and attractive features in the village is that when some of these subdivisions were created, they created greens, green space that permeates the neighborhoods. We don't show them all. There's also the green space that's now village shown down by Cardinal Drive, and there's other areas, but you don't have this sense of the village being dense. It's green because of the sinewy green areas that are village reserved, and the village wants to continue that even with patterns of new development. So the last big area and the most significant area is what we call this gateway. It's all the way at the bottom of the village. You can see the arrows because that's, as you're coming in or if you're leaving, you know that there's significant vistas across what are, you know, the agricultural fields and former agricultural fields on that property. And there's a desire to utilize that property in a way that accommodates a number of objectives. And so some of it is to just allow agriculture to remain while it's in that use, to allow that as a permitted use, but then to allow some other alternatives like a small business park, or active adult, meaning senior, or 55 and over, or veterans-type housing. So the committee, there's not a strong desire to have like one monolithic use, and no one wants to see the southern gateway just be one big warehouse. There is a desire to accommodate and to achieve multiple objectives because it's a strategic parcel, and it's also one of the last remaining areas that you can really plan something well on it. So that is addressed in the plan. And again, more details there. So again, this is just a summary of what I went through with regard to the gateway. There are a couple of heavier commercial uses and light industrial use areas, but that's frankly where they exist now. We're not envisioning having new areas. There's the downtown area, there's the various three residential areas, and this interconnected system of greenway corridors, and that, that's the land pattern for the village. So toward the end of the Complan document, there is an implementation matrix, and it summarizes all of these topics, whether it's land use and zoning or housing, and then it's And then it summarizes all of the objectives and sets forth whether achievement of these objectives are either short-term, long-term, or just ongoing. That's going to be continuous implementation to achieve certain objectives. At the back of the document are design guidelines, and it's to ensure that any infill development, any new infill development really achieves a look that maintains the village's character. Two-story buildings, maybe three-story buildings. And if you look to the bottom right, there's an image. One of the photos, or many of the photos we had taken are of new development in the town of Poughkeepsie called Eastdale Village. And there, they really achieved the aesthetic that the committee felt was appropriate for expansion and extension of the downtown core and going out. It's a look that looks like the village, as it is now. The village is downtown. No one's trying to create long row-style buildings. It's your village is a mix of detached buildings, some row buildings, and you want to keep that kind of eclectic but yet unified sense of place. And so the intent of the design guidelines is to achieve that. So in terms of the next steps, the immediate next steps are for the comprehensive plan committee to vote on whether to recommend this comprehensive plan along with any comments or opinions that people may have as part of this public hearing. If they want, we'll recommend that the village board consider them. Once it gets to the village board, there is an environmental review process that has to be completed before the board could adopt anything. And then importantly, this is all going to be packaged together with adoption of the zoning, which are the land use regulations, to implement the comprehensive plan so that they are done together and coordinated together. So with that, we'd like to know, this is a public hearing for those of you who are attending and have comments, what you might want to present, what you would like the comprehensive plan committee to consider as they deliberate on that and make the recommendation to the village board of the comprehensive plan. So with that, if Pete, are they going to come up here?
Well, I have a sign-up sheet, so if anybody would like to speak, we can work off the sheet first, and then anyone else, maybe you have a thought after the fact.
George, do you mind putting this on the table? Thank you.
Hi, I'm a volunteer. I got it.
And then once we go through people who have signed up, people can raise their hand if they have any comments they want to make about the plan. And then once we hear your comments, this committee is going to reconvene in the back office while the village board continues its public meeting, and they're going to discuss any comments that they hear this evening, and again, whether to decide to forward this to the village with any recommendations or comments. Mr. Attorney, do we keep our public hearing open while we deliberate in the back about whether to recommend, or can we close the public hearing and then come back out?
You would close the public hearing, and then you come back out.
And then, so then we'll deliberate, and then come back out, and the recommendation can be made if it's going to be made.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I should say, unless there's a reason to keep the public hearing open.
Okay, we'll see.
Yeah, but if there's not, then yes, you close it and then deliberate.
All right.
Okay, first one on the list is Anthony.
Bryce, Bryce, yeah.
So do I, where I talk, over there?
Yeah, hang on, Andy. Let me get a microphone on there.
Maybe we could just hand it around.
You got a desk right here.
Yes, really.
Don't use the bathroom. Anybody else can use this, okay?
Thank you. So Andy Bryce, I am a new resident to, thank you, new resident to Washingtonville. So this is my first government meeting. The, so I have a little bit of experience with the comprehensive plan from another place where I live. So I first want to commend you all for the work that you did. I know how hard it is, so I do want to commend you. It is good work when I looked at it. The only thing that really piqued my curiosity and not that, so in a way, it might impact me, because there's a balance between preserving green space and balancing, you know, and having a wider tax base. So 3.4, because there are some properties on, in 3.4 that was mentioned that was in the hands of private owners. And so I know if it was me and I brought one acre or 10 acres or something, and I had in my mind of I wanted to develop it, if I looked at this plan, I'm not quite sure how that plan, would it still allow for the development when I purchased that land to go through? So it just wasn't clear to me. And again, I didn't, I only purchased a small lot of land. And we do own a business, and so, you know, I do have some business interests and things like that. But that 3.4 just really, I just needed some more clarity. Is it, when they purchased it and they put in their, whatever it was, their plans for it to do that, is that still allowed? Or now we are taking that away from them? Because if we're now taking that away from them, that might present problems, you know, from when they first purchased it. So that's my question, and that's all I have.
So I'm going to bring that up while we can take another comment.
Sure. Matthew.
I can actually interject from a legal standpoint in that the general rule, with some narrow exceptions, is that if there is not approval by the building department or the planning board or the zoning board or whatever entity needs to approve development, what is allowed is, so if you purchase the property and then the zoning then changes, you are subject to the zoning as it is, the changed zoning, with pretty stringent exceptions, unless you have approvals from the necessary board or entity.
Matthew.
Hi, my name's Matt. I'm a new local business owner, and being that I operate in Washingtonville as often as I do, I don't exactly have a problem with the taxes being raised because I see how well they're used in this town. However, I do have a curiosity as far as the commercial zoning goes, as I'm a business owner, as well as one thing that was mentioned about not wanting buildings over three stories. I personally don't like working on buildings over three stories, but I'm looking to get in real estate eventually and build developments, small malls, things of that nature. And that would really limit me here in Washingtonville, is what I took away from that. Other than that, though, I actually really do like that plan. I think that a lot of zoning changes do need to happen around here, mostly because we have a lot of single-family housing, and I think that you can really benefit around here from having multifamily housing. But other than that, I just have a few concerns of whether commercial would be splashed around. Because I know, as a small business owner, commercial enables so much. Everybody who works, everybody who lives in single-family would have a job opportunity. Everybody who maybe lives by commercial areas would have closer job opportunities to them, better suited to them. And I, for one, as a G C in the area, would have a lot more work opportunities provided for my crew around the area if there were more commercial endeavors. I'd handle a lot of holiday leggings, so. More businesses. I noticed more businesses, more people areas, more, just Monroe is very, very business-heavy. And they grow very fast, and they're a very, very safe community to be around. And all the work that's done over there is very brand-new construction. It is large, large buildings, but I think that Washingtonville could benefit from going in that direction a lot, like that.
Thank you.
Bill there.
I'm Bill Mary, live on Clinton Drive. Been a resident here 27 years. I also like to commend folks up here because I thought this was very professionally done. I've only gotten through about 75% of the 126 pages, but I think it was very well done overall, and I'm very happy about it. I do have a question that I guess I would address more to the attorney, or anybody who does. I remember reading an article in the newspaper a while back that the governor now has the right to kind of override local zoning laws or whatever, to allow increased development for housing. Is that something that is addressed in this, or is there some protection in this against that?
So I haven't read anything recently. I know that the executive branch was proposing that. I want to say not last year, but the year before. In fact, I'm involved in some litigation where that proposal was mentioned. That ultimately died. I am not aware of any ability, I'm not aware that that was resurrected, let's put it that way. I know she proposed it. I know it faced significant pushback, and I know it sort of died on the vine.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. My recollection was that it was a last-minute deal that it cut through, so.
Let me.
I would hope that legal counsel has reviewed this, or are they going to?
That's part of the village board process. They would be, yes.
Okay, and can you tell me how long the environmental review process is? Because I think the sooner we get this in place, the better.
Right.
So how long would that take? Assuming that the board was to recommend it to the village board, what's the timeline for getting this implemented?
I would say the timeline is actually probably more related to the public hearing process and the zoning discussion. The environmental will be concurrent with it. So we're talking about maybe another one or two months.
Okay.
So it's not years, we're literally in months right now.
Okay.
I would, well, I'll let you finish him, and then I'll cover all these.
Just two more things, I don't want to take up the whole meeting here. But I noticed objective 2.4 in section two, which is housing,
Uh huh.
talks about the village exploring the creation of accessory dwelling units, which I know are a hot topic. I see there are a lot of restrictions on it here, so I'm hoping that this does not mean that this can become very widespread. It's a limited use that the village is considering, no?
And the word is explore and considering.
I see that as well, they'll say explore.
And so what you should keep an eye on is the zoning that'll come out.
Okay.
And if there is the opportunity for it, it's not going to be something that's necessarily widespread. It may be you have to have a certain lot size. It may be, I mean, there's going to be parameters if the village board considers it as part of their housing need. So details to follow.
Okay, and one thing I couldn't find in here, this is the last thing I promised, is are there any restrictions to somebody buying up two or three lots and combining them all into one big lot?
No.
Not addressed?
No, that's not generally a restriction that you can implement.
No, that happens quite frequently. They're still subject to, irrespective of whether it's one lot or three lots, they're still subject to the zoning law.
Okay.
But lot mergers and subdivision, lot mergers happen very frequently. Yeah.
I have a couple of, I don't want to take the whole meeting. I have a couple of typos and things to point out.
Sure.
Just to follow up, I did a quick Google search, and what I remembered from the governor is, was accurate.
Okay.
She proposed it in very early 2023, it died on the vine. I haven't seen anything suggesting that there was a backroom deal at the end. With respect to the timing of it, under New York law and regulations, as the adoption of a comprehensive plan is what's called a secret type-one action. So as soon as the board, the board is going to first of all have to declare itself what's called lead agency.
Right.
And they have to, well, they actually have to first announce that they intended to designate themselves lead agency. There's a 30-day waiting period after that. And then you have to send out certain notices to the Department of Transportation, Health, et cetera, Blooming Grove, so to see if they have any comments. That takes another 30 days. So there's about a 60-day necessary buffer built into the law before the board can adopt the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you, good work, thank you.
There will be another public hearing as well.
Yeah, the good news in terms of process is the, when you adopt zoning or comprehensive plan, the only agency involved is the village board. So while you can coordinate with other boards, they're it in terms of agencies. So the coordination process, thankfully, not significant at all.
Anyone else have a comment that didn't sign? Jacqueline, just give your name and address.
My name is Jacqueline Davis Morris. I've been a resident of Washingtonville for 25 years. I just have a question, because I came in a little late, so I don't know if you guys addressed the historical district, or is that going to be addressed with the zoning?
Historic resources are addressed in the comp plan. The recommendation is to create a historic board and to designate locally historic buildings. There's more protection afforded to historic buildings when they're designated locally than when they're on the national register or state register. That doesn't do anything, that doesn't stop a demolition. However, when a community designates it locally and has a historic board, you can't just demolish a building. It has to go through a whole review process, and you have to prove that you couldn't have used it for something else. So that is part of this process.
Okay, so the construction that's happening with one building that wasn't designated in the historical district before can continue and could act, they could actually demolish the building?
Not if it's designated, it's part of the process.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out, because I know that there was one building on 94 that was not included in the historical district, and there was also the building across from the Brotherhood.
Right.
That was not.
So you don't have to be in a district. So districts are used when you have multiple buildings that are all together. For instance, in the village of Monroe, Stage Road area, that's a district because there's a whole series of them. But you can designate individually, individual properties. So you can pick this one and that one, as long as it's historic and it's determined to be historically significant at the local level. Washingtonville, it's important in Washingtonville's history, you can do that.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be a district, it can be just a building.
So the board that's going to deal with that will discuss those.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I believe right now the thought is that the village board is going to do the actual adoption of the historic buildings.
Will be part of the historical review board at some point.
Right, so the review board will review the applications. The village board is going to, the thought is that they will actually adopt a local law that says these are the historic properties, yeah.
Yes, and also just to add, spin off of that. We had our historian actually go over that, and we've been working on that for quite a while. Like Bonnie had mentioned, it's not just the district, but other historical homes that may be outside of what we declared the historical district be designated as historic. And we did create a list, and there are several additional structures that are.
Thank you.
Do you mind, to start, to just piggyback on that? Does the owner of those historic homes have an option not to be part of the historic?
There's a public hearing process, so.
So the village board says, my home is historic. Is it a hearing, and I got to attest that to the village board?
You can submit your information, you can say it's not historic, it's been altered. That's all part of the process.
What's the criteria that makes a building historic? Is that a village criteria?
Fifty years, it could be architectural, it could be.
Who makes that criteria, village, or is there?
That's in the law, that's in the law. And it follows, there's a model law that was set forth by New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation. So it's based on the model law that comes from the state and then implemented for the village of Washingtonville.
Okay. Out of the 5,000 residents, what percentage of participation would you get from residents of the village?
Um.
Because I saw the survey, it was 153, and the presentation they had in the village.
Right.
What was the percentage of participation?
It was.
Because you said, you made this statement that there was a lot of public participation.
Right.
So what's that percentage?
Well, it was the 153, it was the, I can't tell you who all did the mini survey. It's going to be in the 200s to 300s.
Out of the 5,000, of course.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we have to plan for those who show up, so.
You made a statement that there was a lot of public participation.
Yes.
It doesn't sound a lot to me.
So there were.
I'm just saying, the statement was a lot of public participation.
There was.
The 5,000 plus, that's a low percentage.
It's a lot of participation in comparison to how many non-martini.
It was still a low percentage of.
Yeah, so just to clarify, my point was, public participation was part of this process. There were many opportunities to participate. There was also Community Day, which I didn't mention. So we were there, Community Day, it was open to everybody, the survey was open to everybody. This isn't a situation where this committee was involved in putting something together, and there was no outreach. There was significant outreach, and it's up to the people who are going to show up and who's going to want to participate and put their comments in. That's who. That's who we plan for.
So that's an outreach, but not participation?
That's what I had expressed, yes.
CTY messages went out.
I understand that. I'm just saying, if you want to go up to the village, put in your input, it's a low percentage.
We actually tried to reach out to the schools. I mean, we did a lot.
We got charms in the schools with the scan.
You got a D I D.
Yeah, QR codes. We had flyers.
We had postcards made up. We got them in the library.
They were individually mailed. It was a big effort. Yes.
My name is James Kassaza. I'm one of the owners of what you've described as the gateway. In addition to myself, my wife's family, the Steves, own that property. I've been a resident of Blooming Grove since about seventy-five years. My wife's family has been here for about seventy years. In fact, my father-in-law and mother-in-law operated the dairy farm in the so-called Gateway area. And also we're very active in the community. My father-in-law is the village justice for thirty-five years and also was one of the founders of the ambulance corps. The reason I'm here is I have several concerns about the draft of the comprehensive plan. And our object on behalf of the owners and myself, the other owners and myself, is to work with the village to come up with a comprehensive plan for the use of this land, which both serves the village interest and also serves the interest of the property owners who've owned the property for fifty-plus years. The current zones on the property include an RA zone, residence agriculture, and a MHC zone, manufactured housing zone, both of which allow residential use. The comprehensive plan committee did a survey of residential properties as part of your development. There were a total of two thousand and sixty-four residential units. But of that total, in the last twenty years, only ten units have been constructed, one half of one percent. The community is quite stagnant. I'm reading your statistics, Bonnie, right from your chart. I'm sorry, in the last fifteen years, from 2010 to 2025, fifteen years, there have been a total of ten units constructed. The community is not growing and the community should be growing. Now, the question, I have a couple of questions and I think these have been answered, but I want to just verify for the record. Has there been, been an EAF prepared, an environmental assessment form, or a CECRA form for any of the actions taken by the comprehensive committee?
Not by the comprehensive plan committee because they're an advisory board. They're going to be prepared for the village board, when the village board, because they take the action. CECRA is done for the group that takes the action, so that's going to be done by the village board.
Neither of those have been done yet. The village board will act on them when it's referred to the village board.
Yes.
Has there been any consultation on the, on the part of the comprehensive committee with the Orange County Planning Department?
They have been sent informally the draft, but formally it has to be done by the village board.
Did the comprehensive committee seek any input from the Orange County Planning Board before you completed that draft and sent it to the county board?
No, that'll be done as part of what's required by the village board.
It's part of the Gmail process.
Yeah, it's not required by the committee. It's required by the village board.
Has the committee, the comprehensive committee contacted any other planning agencies such as the Village Planning Board, the Local Pattern for Progress Organization, or any other organizations that have produced input for the comprehensive committee?
The membership has individuals who are part of the planning board.
Three members are on the planning board and the Z B A.
Okay, was there any consultation? Orange County participated in a three-county assessment of regional housing needs and produced, as recently as 2020, an Orange County report specific to the county about regional housing needs. Has that been consulted by the committee prior to drafting this proposal?
I'd have to check on our resources. It's in, it would be in the.
The Orange County Legislature has created, as recently as a couple of weeks ago, a committee to look into the lack of affordable housing in the county. Has any contact been made with any of the Orange County committees?
If it was just form, we couldn't have contacted them.
We could have contacted the planning department, but apparently that's going to be done as part of the EAF. My biggest concern is that the proposed use, which is being placed on the property, this AB zone fails on several regards. There's also a small portion of the land which is designated as a DC downtown commercial, which I think also fails the village. We have a village which has a lot of vacant retail space. There's vacancies. There are two bank buildings that are vacant downtown. The old former Corner Candle Store is vacant. There's vacancies in the Fulton Square Building. There are vacancies in the Brotherhood Plaza Building. I think the last thing the village needs is more vacant commercial space. And an expansion of the downtown commercial corridor will simply create competition for the merchants who are trying to survive in the current downtown situation. So I think that's a problem. The other problem is the AB zone does not allow, excuse me. Supposed to take my medicine at eight o'clock, but it will wait. The AB zone is, I am afraid, an attempt to make the land absolutely undevelopable and to an effect have a taking without the necessary compensation. The permitted uses in the AB zone include open space, golf course, passive recreation, public recreation space, walking trail, nursery or landscape, stables. I don't know if the downtown is ready for the smell from stables located within walking distance. I used to get complaints from the dairy operation that we had. Emergency service building, village government building, a farm market, a hotel, or I like these two, sewer pump station or sewer plant. Again, I don't think those are viable use for the property. This is the gateway entrance to the village. I think that the comprehensive committee has recommended several new zones for the village, which would be much more applicable for the, for this parcel. Finally, the view shed is the most damaging recommendation that's coming out of this committee. The only reason there's a view shed there is because the Steves' family and my family have operated a farm on that location, necessarily keeping the land clear and open. Those of you who are new to the community might not realize that when you drive down Route Two oh eight, almost from the big curve by the Round Hill House Restaurant, there was the same view, except now it's obscured by the trees and the brush that grows there. When I stopped farming, this gateway entrance, it too will grow trees and there will be no view. We are being punished for having been the last struggling farm operation here in the community and therefore keeping that land open. I would request that the committee consider all of these matters and modify this plan to make a recommendation that better serves both the community, which we're very concerned about, and also us as the property owners who've owned and maintained that land for so many years. Thank you.
Sean, I think the property Mr. Kassaza is talking about, I think a few years ago, Old Nanyan wanted to put homes on there. They couldn't come up with the water. That may be one of the hindrances to putting homes on there.
Well, we sat down, we spoke at length about this. We understand you spoke against.
Just so that everyone knows.
What would you like?
I've been attending all the community meetings and I have met with Donna. And again, my plan is, I don't plan to be a developer, but I want this land to be marketable somewhere down the line. And as you said, in two thousand and four and five, Kayham Nanyan had a proposal for a market value senior home. Would have been a condominium type structure, would have been fully taxable, would have been no kids for the schools, but would have been, and also would have not cost the village anything because it's a condominium. They would have been maintaining their own streets, et cetera. That fell not because of a water lack. They found more than enough water. It was a question of the sewer capacity at the time. Since then, there's been an addition to the sewer plant. So again, my, I've been working with the committee now for, what are we up to now? Three years?
Two years.
Two years, two and a half years. So I've been trying to impress upon the committee that they need to look at both sides of the page. They need to look at what's good for the village, and I don't think this plan is, particularly the expansion of that downtown, and what's suitable and fair to the property owners who have been the long-term residents of this village. Thank you.
We heard what you do not want, but do you want to share what you might want to see?
Well, actually, I'd like to touch upon everybody's comments because one was, there was a question about three point four that was raised. So there are properties. It's not to stop anyone from developing properties. Three point, three point four is specific to there were lands that are common space, homeowner association space, lands that were supposed to be owned by the village or continuing in the ownership of a homeowner's association. And they were set aside and they're shown on maps as common open space. Somehow, one of them that we know of came up for tax sale, was purchased, and is essentially a wetland, but is now in private ownership. And so there may be an expectation to build there. So that's what that three point four is dealing with. It's for the village to take an inventory of all the common areas that were set aside as part of these big housing developments and to protect them. They will have to deal with situations if any of that common open space has been acquired and when it wasn't supposed to be acquired for development, they'll have to deal with that on a case-by-case basis. But to my knowledge, there's only one and the comprehensive plan is recommending, again, this inventory to ensure that doesn't happen again. There is the question about the governor. Oftentimes, the governor comes up with ideas of requiring.
Google, you backed down.
Housing, exactly. So, so what happens is she'll come up with an idea and everybody, municipal home rule law, you can't tell us what to do. Everybody gets upset and it kind of wanes. I will say that right now, with the process or how it's being pursued, for the most part, is more of a carrots as opposed to a sticks type approach. So when I talked about New York Forward, when I talked about the D R I funding applications, in there, depending on what the funding is, they've said that you have to make a commitment to housing if you want the funding. So they're doing it that way. And it happens to be this year. I don't know if that'll be continued. It wasn't in the past. And that commitment isn't even clear because you sign a piece of paper. It doesn't say anything about affordable. It doesn't say how many units. I mean, it's very vague. And so there's some who don't know actually if you sign that paper, what it really means. So the governor has been trying to promote housing and many municipalities feel that it's not, it shouldn't be within her purview. It should be for each individual community to decide. I think they've also tried to pass accessory apartment laws where it's just allowed and you don't have a say. But again, I think a lot of municipalities are usually up in arms when those kinds of laws are proposed. And so far, I'm not aware of anything that's passed. And again, it's more the carrots. You get money if you decide to pursue housing. So, and thank you for the comment about what happens with buying a whole lot. So it's a very good point. So I think the village board should consider some options for that. In terms of the gateway property, some of the uses that you're describing, those aren't in the comp plan. The comp plan specifically says continuation of agriculture, small-scale business park, active adult housing, veteran housing, other limited commercial uses. And this is not the zoning yet. This is options. So whereas you said sewer pump and sewer pump station, that's not here under the gateway. What's here is business parks and active adult housing and veteran housing. So it does talk about housing.
However, the veterans' housing and the affordable housing are listed under the special exception use category, not the permitted use. Special exception use means that you have to appear before a board and you have to be able to demonstrate why that special use is appropriate or beneficial to the community. It's different than a permitted use.
Understood.
You meet the parameters set out in the zoning, you're allowed to do that use.
So New York State changed the special use requirement. So I guess I'm a little confused. Do you have a copy of the zoning?
I have a copy of the proposal that the comprehensive committee put together and I also have a copy of the current zone, yes.
Okay, but the comprehensive plan didn't, committee didn't come up with the zoning?
Yes, it did.
Are you talking about the, just the chart? It might have been the chart.
You came up with a chart. You had a map. You showed different parts of the village in different zones and you had a use chart.
Okay.
Which had pages and pages.
I was asking about zoning. It's the chart you're talking about that they were working on.
This chart is for the basis of the zoning. Permitted uses means under the zoning, this would be a permitted use.
And special uses are uses that are permitted, provided they meet if they're any individual standards. So for example, gas stations, sometimes they say they have to be a thousand feet apart because they don't want to hold cluster.
Special use permits require you to go and ask and to prove that you need the requirement set out in that special use. I'm familiar with how the zoning.
And I'm just explaining to the, to the committee, to the community at large. So special uses require public hearings, but as do site plans. And with special uses, there may be individual standards, but New York State law allows those to be waived if the planning board is of the mindset that it should be waived for particular circumstances. So it's permitted in special uses and those were reviewed by the committee, but ultimately it's the village board that's working on the zoning. Thank you. I think those were, I don't know if I addressed everything. I think I addressed most of the comments and questions. Were there any other comments and questions that people want to raise at this point?
I just had one more.
Sure.
You talked about adding like the sidewalk cafes and things like that.
Yes.
And you put in there that they're required to have some kind of security measures so that a car can't go into the sidewalk and run people over intentionally or by accident?
Right.
Things like that would be addressed. If you allow somebody to put out a sidewalk cafe, there needs to be some kind of.
Okay. Yes. And there has to be enough room to allow the pedestrians to get around the sidewalk cafes.
Yeah, you know, some places they put up those bollards.
Bollards are absolutely.
Prevent some, you know, I'm not talking about something being, what, necessarily being intentional.
Right.
But somebody can lose control of the car in their weather or whatever and you don't want something enough that they be eating outside in the weather, but you're not saying, it could be an accident.
Yes.
Bill, thank you for that because we are looking at modifying a current law for that, for outdoor dining, to making sure that there's enough space on the sidewalk for ADA and everything else that goes with it. And just recently, obviously, potentially because of New Orleans and some of the things that are going on and hopefully it would never happen. But yeah, that would be definitely part of the code to make sure that there would be sufficient, some type of barrier to protect that. Because we also plan on using the E J square for the downtown businesses that we're enhancing some lighting and doing some things there. So like in the summertime, spring to fall, that it, the parking lot can be closed, you know, upon the wishes of the bit local businesses there. And they'll bring out tables and chairs and do outdoor dining and do have some light music and things like that, some entertainment. So that'll all be, you know, part of the big plan at the end of the day. But thank you. That was a great comment.
And the other option is to allow them inside yards so that it's not just the sidewalk, but it may be that there are individual buildings as opposed to road buildings and there may be yard space on the side of the building to put an outdoor cafe. and there may be yard space on the side of the building to put a, an outdoor cafe. Anyone else? So, with that, um, the committee can close the public hearing at this point?
They can, yes.
So, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
A motion to close the public hearing?
Second, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? So, we're going to go to the back room to consider the public comments and any other comments the board may have. And then, if the group wants to vote whether to recommend the conditions or the comments, they can do that then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think we also need to mention that that is still considered a public meeting?
Yes.
It's open to the public, so if anybody wants to go in the back, they're welcome to do that.
Yes.
Down that hallway. Okay, so, um, thank you very much, everybody, for your comments during that public hearing. Great input, and I'm sure the committee will digest that, come back with some resident, some more information and some recommendation potentially for the village board. So with that, um, could I have a motion to resume, come out of recess, so for, uh-
Motion to resume?
Is there a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are now back in regular meeting mode. And with that, we're at the public comment on agenda items, if anybody has some questions. Bill?
Yeah, I, Bill Braver, Washington, really hard, the chief just left me. I wanted to say something in front of him. So I just want to thank the board, um, most, most definitely the board members, as well as our police department and the DPW for their support for the menorah incident that occurred.
You very much.
We'll call you next year.
Yep, it was, it was very nice, very well handled, and it was a beautiful event, so thank you, and thank the rabbi as well. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Uh, Anthony Bryce, the, so number six, resume water hauling? Again, I'm new here, so what is that?
So water hauling, we sell water to a, a local business that hauls water to different municipalities. Uh, during the summer months, he does a pool, filling of pools. And anything that if somebody is in the need of water, he'll, um, he'll deliver, you know, obviously charge for that. So in turn, we charge him a rate that we have just increased from eighteen fifty per thousand to twenty thou, uh, twenty dollars per thousand. Um, we were using or doing this up until probably, I want to say Novemberish, uh, when the water levels in the wells went down low enough where we suspended that. And now the wells are back at twenty-three feet, where we were pretty much for most of the summer. And now we're just going to resume the water hauling efforts.
I'm familiar, from another place where I did, did the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony. Bill?
Um, hi, Tom. Um, so you know those fire on Clinton Drive the other day?
Correct.
By the way, could, could you state your name for the county?
I'm sorry, Bill, I'm at Clinton Drive. The fire is at twenty-five Clinton Drive, down the block from my house. And as you know, my house is the highest in the village, and I've had water pressure problems, which you've thankfully taken care of. But, the firemen on the scene told me they had trouble getting water out of the fire hydrant that is almost right outside my house.
Right.
So, I don't know if that's something that needs to be done to make sure that can't happen. Obviously, I'm worried about having a fire even closer, not quite to my house or whatever, but if there's a problem getting the water out of that fire hydrant, it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, absolutely, and, um, we've talked to the DPW. Um, I have to get a status update on that, because that was one of the first things to be checked. And if there's an issue with it, we don't know if something was frozen down on the stem, what prevented the water from coming up. They said there was water pressure, but it was very low. So it is on the priority to get repaired and figure out what's up with it.
Maybe connected to the problem in my house, I don't know.
Yeah.
But since you addressed it, I've had no problem with my house.
Yeah, well-
But we don't use that kind of pressure.
Right, at the end of the day, generally about, I want to say about ninety pounds of pressure in the hydrants, and, you know, obviously what trickles into the homes, but at the end of the day, we did make repairs to the pump station down below, and there were a number of valves and things that were not behaving properly. They were old, and so we ended up replacing all of that. I don't know if you were home that particular afternoon, but-
I think I was, the canes and everything-
We checked to make sure that everything's good and-
You know, it happened to be a power problem occasionally, but it's been addressed. As far as my house is concerned, I heard the firemen tell me that they couldn't get water out of the hydrant.
Yeah, I was at the call, and yes, okay, I'll, I'll get an update for you, and I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome, just make a note.
Any other comments on agenda items?
All right, so moving to, um, basically discussions. As I mentioned earlier, the draft twenty-five, twenty-six budget will be available Wednesday, the eighth, online. And we'll print out a copy for Sean. And if anybody wants a hard copy, just if you, if you give us a couple of minutes notice or whatever, we can print it out for you. The draft public hearing, as I also mentioned, will be Monday, the thirteenth, at seven PM at the village hall. Um, we've been talking about, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I apologize.
That's all right, Anthony.
I missed another thing, because when we're talking about the budget, um, in, it kind of relates to the comprehensive plan. My wondering is, what are we going to increase our tax base? So that might be a question that waits until the eighth or the thirteenth?
Next Monday.
Yeah, I mean, it's a que, it's a question, um, what can we do with the tax space? Is Mr. Kazazi here is, is really the last farm in open space. So, you know, as the zone is looking at it right now, one of the concerns has always been, people seem to be satisfied with the amount of homes we have. Um, I think for the most part, a bunch of those comments were, they weren't particularly maybe interested in single-family type homes because of road infrastructure issues, school impacts, all those types of things. So, we were basically kind of zoning in around senior housing, fifty-five and over, and a veterans' park for vet, you know, military veterans. Something that I think is, is definitely needed out there as well. And, um, you know, we're putting our feelers out there, and we'll see where we go. And again, on the other side of that tree line, we were looking for ratables, something, you know, one similar, if you've been in Goshen on Hatfield Lane?
Yep.
You know, two-story type medical buildings, things like that. Um, you know, we don't think it's a real good fit, obviously, for diesel and, and huge warehouses and that type of situation. So, um, that's kind of our vision of what we were going on. And most of that vision is actually what came from the audiences and the people that were here for those meetings. You know, we, we feel our job is to represent what those feelings are, right? I don't want to sit here and then say, you know what, I don't believe in that, uh, we're just going to do X. This board has always felt that, you know, we take the recommendations from you, we work for you, you put us in these chairs, and, and everybody deserves that respect to listen and, and try to follow those guidelines. That's always been my purview, so, um, we'll, we'll take it from there. But yeah, it's a conversation we, we'll have at the, at the budget meeting potentially, and at the public hearings as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, just going to talk about the completion of the lead and copper survey. That information and reporting and so forth have been sent out to the Orange County Department of Health, and we'll be waiting to see what their next evolution is going to be of what we have found. Um, and we're continuing actually to hit a couple other homes, because there were probably two hundred, the number has been, has dropped significantly, especially because we concentrated on North Street, um, South Street, two oh eight North, East and West Main Street, because there are a number of homes that we had concerns about the year being built, and if they were going to have some type of lead pipes. So all that information is now at the county level, and we're going to wait to see what the next step is. Because the biggest question is, okay, you found it, now who's going to pay to fix it? You know, and if that's going to be an unfunded mandate from New York State, that every municipality is going to be responsible for doing that, I don't know how anybody could really do that. Take it to a city, and probably every downtown business is going to have some type of situation. And, and you're talking about just our little village, if one building had it, you've got to replace it coming across sidewalks into the street, state highway. I mean, it's, it's going to be a project and a half, so it'll be interesting to see how they handle it. And hopefully get input from the municipalities so that it's not being shoved down our throats at the end of the day. So we'll keep you updated on that. Um, we've also been talking about replacement of our telephone system here. Um, as we've mentioned, this system has been sunset, uh, which means there's no support, there's no parts. And, um, it's basically dead in order, but thank God it is working. Um, but we also feel that, you know, we need to do something to get off of this system and get with the latest and best technology will be voice-over IP phones. There'll be, um, um, you know, the latest and greatest of what we can do. And we'll end up being, saving money on our frontier bills, because everything will be, everything infrastructure-wise will be changing. Vernon has done a great job, we brought in, what, five, at least six different vendors? And, um, came in, had all the demos, and next meeting, I think, we'll be presenting, or at least for the new budget moving forward, starting in March, we'll present the, uh, the numbers. It's a, a monthly maintenance number, and we'll, we'll take it off from there. Um, and by the way, it's the same system, we're just going to piggyback what is already at the police department. We got them a seventeen percent discount, and we'll be paying, I think the number was in the neighborhood of seven fifty a month for, uh, you know, five years. And it's a turnkey system, and they're a local company, which is good. They'll be able to replace phones, change whatever needs to be changed, have support here on a, on a telephone call. Most of the other companies were all over the world, um, and it was really up to you to set it up and get it going. So we're pretty, pretty happy with that, and I got to thank Vernon for taking the lead and, and bringing it to, uh, to reality. Let me see, so next is reschedule the public hearing for Monday, uh, January twentieth, twenty twenty-five. This is the local law to modify chapter one twenty-five of the village code for park hours that we've been talking about, extending open hours at Burn Allen Park until nine PM for pickleball play. So that'll be presented in the January twentieth. Uh, we've already mentioned the resuming of water hauling, there's no other questions on that. And also, as mentioned, Bill mentioned, we lost a, family lost their home on Clinton Drive. Um, you know, we've offered whatever we could do to help the family. They seem to be, as I talked to a couple of friends that are working with them, they're doing okay. Uh, they're currently in a hotel, um, the insurance company's been out there. But to help out the family, the Knights of Columbus, where the gentleman Carl is a member of, they're going to be doing a, um, a bingo fundraiser Saturday at their hall, um, on January eleventh. The doors will open at five, and the games will start at six thirty, and I understand all the proceeds will be going to the family. So, thank God, everybody was safe, nobody was home. Their pet was, uh, with the family, as I understand, so that was a, a safe save. So we'll move into a couple of resolutions, which is resolution twenty-five zero 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 one to adopt local law number one of the year twenty twenty-five, entitled authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in General Minister of Law, section three C. Can I have a motion, please? Steve, have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one absent. Resolution twenty-five zero zero two to adopt a bond resolution to purchase, uh, twenty twenty-five police vehicle outfitted at a cost not to exceed sixty thousand. Have a motion?
Motion.
Steve, have a second?
Second.
Okay, just one quick comment, we're doing this resolution with the anticipation that, um, we might not need this now, but we're just going to do it to be prepared for the budget of twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. And we'll have more information potentially at the next meeting to explain a grant that was, um, out there that we understand that we have, uh, been accepted for. And, um, this potentially will, won't need to act on, we're just going through the motion to prepare ourselves if we needed to. Any other comments from the bench? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one absent. And then resolution twenty-five zero zero three to authorize budget transfers and amendments as necessary to effect the necessary transfers of the funds to pay the village warrants. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one.
Um, Mayor, I, I would consider doing an oral resolution to change the date of the public hearing on the hours, given that it's a local law, it needs to be set by resolution.
On the-
So you have the-
For the park?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just oral resolution for this.
Oh, okay. That makes it easier for us. I'm sorry? Yeah, because it was in that, well, it was in chapter one twenty-five. So we can take that offline and do a resolution at the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
We have time, it's winter time.
Yeah, okay.
So just to advise, um, our warrants that we're paying this particular week, and we pay every two weeks out of our general fund totaling of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Out of our water fund, we're paying fifteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. And out of our sewer fund, the amount is twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Back to public comment, if anyone has anything? Anthony?
Yeah, so on the lead and copper survey, I do know that other municipalities, um, have received grant funds from the state and federal government to, um, take care of what's from the, up to the property line.
Right.
And sometimes the property also has, they have been reimbursed for it. So just in FYI.
Yeah, do you know what municipality that I could contact?
City in Burbank.
City of, yeah, never mind.
That happens to be where I'm, where I'm from, so I'll reference.
Yeah, I get the sewer alert warning every morning, so I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, that's well taken care of.
Poughkeepsie, Poughkeepsie as well, uh, has done that.
Yeah. We'll dig into it, we'll talk to the engineers and so forth, because I didn't know they started to release any money or what the big plan was to support it. Because every community had to, you know, do this.
Do the survey.
They were very, very strict with it.
Yes.
So, thank you, we'll do that, we'll follow up on that. Any other public, any?
Do you want to status update of the, uh, police contract?
Well, the police contract that, right now, is we've asked for a, what would you call it, Steve?
There's some language that is being worked up.
There's a lot of language going on in the last three months.
All right?
Yeah, I didn't pay with that, that's my next question.
Do what happened?
Oh, we had info.
No, we're, we're fine that way, it's just-
You're fine, but the union obviously is not fine.
They're fine too, with the numbers and everything, we're right up, it's just the language. There is, there is-
Their guy is very, very smart.
We're, we're asking for them for a written proposal, they want, actually, we had an email today or yesterday asking if we could get together and meet. What we wanted to do before we meet is to get what they felt were their, their open issues and, and language changes that they were requesting. Once we had that, then we would set up our meeting. But, um-
Are those numbers counted in the budget? Like, are we counting?
It has nothing to do with, uh, the raises. It has to do with, um, different articles of language. Um, some of it is, there's some language within the contract that talks about abolishments of police departments and things like that, and we're discussing those issues. And we're working as hard as they're working to get, get, get to it. It just, unfortunately, just takes time, and then you have the attorneys, and that takes time too. So, it's, um-
First one, uh, you know, would be, uh, change of E-code of the park at Burnout.
Yeah.
How long till the comp, obviously, I've been waiting for the comp plan to be done, so start updating our E-codes, whatever those laws that are so outdated and not- we start updating our E-codes for our village laws that are so outdated and not accurate online? How long till after this comp plan gets done, and then we start updating our village code? And we start enforcing the codes that we have on the books right now?
When they are done in that back room, if they decide to present the comp plan to the village board, which is, I believe, that's what the intentions are, there will be a contingency for us to consider certain comments that were made. You know, at that point, then we revisit it. The zoning is included in that, and then it has to go through the environmental process. So I'm still pressed, maybe long form, short form, do we know yet?
It's going to have to be a long form, since it's secret type one, but I don't think that was Vinnie's question. I think Vinnie's question was, once the...
Part of it, we can't update the, you know, we're not going to...
What I'm getting at is, you know, I've said over the summer that we need to start addressing quality of life issues within the village. Houses, tarks on houses, garbage everywhere. A gentleman made a Facebook post about birds, you know, down in Brother Plaza. You know, I know we're trying to, there's a borderline bird sanctuary within the village now, there's garbage down there. The garbage is down there, overfilled. Address the issue. Send out the code enforcement officer that we have.
When I saw that post, we reached out to the building department, because I think that was on a weekend, so that Monday, we sent them out there, because we, I talked to the residents on North Street, because we weren't sure if it was garbage or a carcass in the woods, tree line between...
It's garbage.
The mall and the property owner. So we sent them out there. I believe if there was garbage there, because we told them to check the dumpsters there, and also check the dumpsters behind. I'm sorry?
It's in the plaza.
Okay, but we sent them out there, and if they were open...
Like I said, we need to start addressing the quality of life. And I've been told that we need to update our E-codes, our village codes, and it's been taking time. For almost a year later, I've been saying the same thing, we've got to address the quality of life issues. We want, we want to make this a livable community for everybody that's here, let's address the issues, and start enforcing the codes that we have on the books. They got garbage down there, start sending violation notices to the pyramid, you know? Make them address this issue, stop bagging all its supplies if you have to, but address the issues. And to see those houses...
Like I said, the building department, Vinnie...
With the blue tarks over here, garbage in there, abandoned cars, we got to start enforcing the codes that we have on the books.
Yeah, I agree. And the tark that was on the roof, that house is in bank foreclosure. We were reaching out to the bank, we understand that the apartment might not even be on there anymore, on, what was it, Street Liberty? We're aware of that. Every time that we find something and someone calls, we send out the building department if that needs to be. There are things that are going on that, obviously, ninety-nine percent of the people aren't aware of, because if you're not making the complaint, we're not going to get back to you and tell you. But there's probably two or three homes, the contracting work has been going on, that were sold. No permit, we shut them down.
They are out there.
They're out there, out there.
Quality of life, I'm not talking about building permits.
Well, quality of life is...
Quality of life, we need to start addressing quality of life.
What do you consider quality of life?
Garbage.
Okay, garbage.
Garbage is everywhere.
So, again...
People put that garbage out during the summer bulk. Garbage comes on Wednesday, the bulk is out there Thursday. It's out there for a week, all right?
Well, then somebody needs to call. If somebody's garbage isn't being taken away, they call. Sometimes they call here, if they call the town, the town tax collector, who's in charge of the sanitation, sends them out. It's that simple. You know, in a perfect world, everything would be perfect, but we're in a real world, and garbage sometimes doesn't get picked up, and sometimes something doesn't happen.
But we have a building department.
But we need to pick up the phone, if we need to make comments.
Be proactive, be proactive.
Yes, exactly. They are.
No, you wait for the call, if somebody...
How do you know, driving down the street, that that particular garbage man wasn't picked up?
Be proactive, send a village code officer out there and enforce.
I see a can sitting out there. They pick out twice, they come down Wednesday for me. The guy's there probably four thirty, five o'clock in the morning, normally takes the regular garbage. Recycling guy doesn't come by until some time that I'm already gone. But if I come home and I see the can and it's full, I call the town, and I ask them to come and get it, and they do. It's that simple.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Well, you're talking about garbage, so if you, what are you, you're talking about garbage after a can?
Garbage.
What was it?
Litter.
There is a lot of litter all over.
All around the village, Tom.
And I think no matter how many more cans we buy, there's still going to be garbage.
Because you can't, you can't fix people who just throw stuff on a wall.
But we have, we have E-codes on the books. If there's garbage in somebody's front yard, there's a code for that in our E-code. Enforce the E-code.
It's property management, yes.
It's quality of life. If the village looks like shit, it's going to be like shit. Enforce it. If there's garbage and stuff, if there's abandoned vehicles, we have codes for that. Address the issues.
Well, if you see something, they're called, because I don't know how to address it with you, because...
Now we have a municipal agreement, we have people working with the village from the town, let's send them out there and be proactive.
They are.
Can I say something?
They're out there every day.
We have been so far behind in fire and safety inspections, and since we've had this I M A. with Blooming Grove, it's been going incredibly well, all right? And that's revenue as well, and that's what they're trying to get caught up on right now. We have them for twenty-four hours a week, and they are working hard.
And there's three of them. So if there is something, they'll be out there to address it. Michael?
So I just, I'm Mike Resi on Three Long Street. So I just want to say one thing, as far as garbage and stuff, I was actually coming back from Balesgate the other day with my wife. You look along the side of the road, in front of people's houses, there is garbage litter all the way, for a way, same thing. It's the residents that have to pick up the garbage. It's not necessarily on the village code enforcement. I agree with him.
People throwing stuff out the window.
And I might wait not to make excuses, but the winds have been horrific the last few days, so things are blowing.
But still, I mean, just to maintain your property in front of your house or, I mean, I do more of that. I walk around and pick up the garbage, but people won't even go in their front yard and pick up the garbage. So it's not necessarily a garbage problem, it's a homeowner problem. And people have to take responsibility for that. And they don't, you know? So, but I agree with him in a lot of respects. I see things, I don't want to be on the phone all the time, calling the village or something about certain things. I mean, I've brought up some issues here, and you guys have addressed it properly and stuff, but, you know, I don't want to be calling you guys all the time. So I kind of understand what he's saying in some respects.
Okay.
All right?
Appreciate it.
Okay.
We'll address it. Anyone else?
Sean Hager, you report by the way, right? This question for Donna, the last couple of times I had mentioned about the black marble bench over on there. You said you were going to call the people that put it there.
I reached out to somebody that was reaching out to me.
Did any of the DPW say they damaged it? Because if it was damaged by the village, we should be repairing it, not the private person.
Do we know how it was damaged?
It was hit with a lawnmower. If the person didn't admit it, I don't know, but why not? Did they ever admit to a lawnmower going down into the catch basin over in High Grove? Rolling down the hill?
I mean, I'll...
Has that been reported from the DPW? Where they had to pull it out? I don't know if the guy got hurt, or whatever, but... You ride, I ride my bike, I see a lot of things, maybe I'll put the GoPro back on the plate. I took it off, I used to have it on, because...
Give us the S D., we can play it.
But if it's done by us, we shouldn't be burning them with something that was done by a worker here. Now, it looks like it's a matter of epoxy, I don't know if it is or not.
Now, we'll check with DPW and ask the question. If they damage it, you're right, we should fix it.
Yes, unless they ran, unless they rolled a lawnmower down the hill.
High Grove?
Over in High Grove, into the catch basin, whatever you want to call it, the detention pond.
I'm guessing so.
That's what I said, you're right, the bike, you're walking, you see way too much stuff.
Exactly.
The garbage, the garbage is all over the place, it's all over the green area. All over the side of the road that's, it's property.
Want to form a committee?
There's a hydrant down here that almost all the bolts are busted on, it's going to pop if they're going to use it. Somebody painted it, nobody said anything, you know?
Check into that.
You know, it's just ridiculous stuff. Own up to it and be forgiven. Don't own up to it, don't own up to it and get caught. Same on you.